Just in California alone, Con Edison manages the energy efficiency retrofits for over 400 post offices here in California alone. So we have the contract for the United States Post Office Services. There's a local city there, City of Kerman. It says 500 KW just a few months ago. We've increased that to about 1.2 where the City of Kerman's actually gone 100% renewable based on services providing. So they've actually decided to take the entire city 100% green. These are just some of the notable projects here we wanted to display to kind of share with you some of the things we're doing locally here in California and here in the community. Just a background, as Councilmember Pacheco had mentioned, there is a city subcommittee here, the Green Action Committee, that helped us get started here. And we brought this project proposal here to the City Council back in March, asking if we could do a no-cost analysis for the city and help evaluate the city facilities. And we were helped with a lot with your city staff. We were able to analyze a lot of the facilities. And since March until now, we've compiled a very sleepy bible here of work that's been done. And I'll have Craig Fisher here go through the technical analysis of what's been done on this report. But we're able to identify a lot of energy-saving measures here that we'll be able to share with you tonight that will help save the city a good deal of money. So this is essentially how we got here today back from March and into what we're developing and sharing with you tonight. Essentially, what we've compiled in this report is the investment-grade audit. A lot of things that we evaluated was your energy bills. We asked for historicals going back two years from your water, electricity, gas bills, looked at analyzing your facilities. And again, Craig will be able to go through each and every one of the measures, but that was done through our facilities engineers, our technical team actually went through all this analyzing the city's facilities and came up with the investment-grade audit, which is what we compiled for you today. At this point, I'll go ahead and turn this over to Craig Fisher here, who'll go over some of the pieces of the art report that'd be helpful for the city. Craig?
All right. Thank you, Michael. Good night, councilmembers, mayor, staff, all in attendance. I'm just going to go through briefly the measures that we've developed through this program. Since March of 2015, myself, as well as other members of Con Edison staff and subcontractors, has gone through each and every facility throughout the city. We've counted all your lighting equipment, your water-consuming devices, your mechanical HVAC equipment, how they're controlled, the number of hours they are operated, and basically identified the useful life remaining on these items in order to develop what we have here today, which is a list of energy conservation measures or, in some instance, facility improvement measures that will help you, help the city achieve its goals from a sustainability and energy efficiency standpoint. We looked at a number of measures: interior lighting, exterior lighting, HVAC, solar, pool controls, et cetera. We presented a long shopping list of measures to the subcommittee a few months back, got their input and feedback in terms of direction of what they thought would be most applicable to align with your goals. And what we have finalized here, or from a recommended energy conservation measure, is an exterior lighting LED upgrade project, energy management controls and retrocommissioning here at City Hall, high-efficiency transformers here at City Hall and at the community center, pool control automations over at the community center, DX equipment replacement also at the community center, and also solar photovoltaics at various facilities throughout the city. First one that I'd like to go through is the exterior lighting upgrade. What we have done here is we've gone through all the city's facilities and all exterior lights, whether it's wall packs that are attached to buildings or parking lot lights or walkway lighting throughout the city. What you have currently installed is HID technology. This technology typically lasts somewhere between two to five years, and then it has to be replaced. What we're looking to do is to replace your existing HID lamps with LEDs. It will produce on a fixture-by-fикьr basis somewhere between 40% to 70% energy savings. But beyond the energy savings, it will provide significant operational expenditure reduction. All the fixtures that we're recommending here come with a 10-year parts and labor warranty, so it will basically eliminate your O&amp;M expenditure, work as exterior lighting is concerned, for the next 10 years. The fixtures that we have actually selected for this project is made by a company, Deco Lighting. They have been in business since the '60s, and they're located locally here in Commerce, so you'd have very close support for your equipment. The next measure I'd like to go into, it's the Energy Management Control System upgrade and retrocommissioning. That's basically the control system that controls the HVAC equipment in this building. Currently, you have an older legacy Honeywell system. It does not have all the latest and greatest bells and whistles from an energy efficiency and system operation optimization standpoint. And so what we've recommended here is to go through and retrocommission the system and provide you the latest and greatest in DTC controls that would control the three air handlers that serves this building as well as the central plant. And this will come with additional operational control and flexibility, where all this will be tied into the city's Intranet, and facility staff will be able to troubleshoot and basically adjust temperature controls, identify equipment that may be down remotely either from a computer desktop or mobile device.
Can I just stop there? I just want to add that what's happening is controls are now becoming more on the web, so you can actually get it on your phone and there are different levels of, you know, admission. So you can, you know, staff, you know, or Dan or the work director could change from his phone without coming here and look at the status of air conditioning, irrigation, you know, whatever those things. So that's kind of the more of the next wave of where technology's taking us so that staff has more control.
Thank you, councilman. One other thing I want to point out to this is that what we're providing here is a platform and integrating a City Hall building. The platform is expandable. You will be able to upgrade controllers in other buildings because this is on the city's Intranet. So by future replacement of thermostats in, let's say, your family service center, you'd now have remote control, remote access to control the temperature and set points in those buildings as well and view what's happening in these buildings right here from City Hall.
That's awesome.
Next measure I'd like to discuss is the high-efficiency transformer upgrades. These are your transformers, your step-down transformers within the building here at City Hall and also at the community center. Basically, you receive power from the utility and it's stepped down outside the building. But then once that power comes in the building, let's say somewhere between 600 volts to 480 volts, it's then further stepped down to your plug volt, your plug loads, such as usually somewhere between 110 and 120 volts systems. These systems, they last pretty long, 20 to 25 years, but they do lose efficiency over time. What we've done is we've gone through and we've actually taken measurements of all the transformers in your buildings and identified the ones that are least efficient. And what we're proposing to do here is to replace them with high-efficiency step-down transformers where applicable. Next measure I want to go through quickly here is the pool control automation. The pool over at the community center currently recirculates water 24/7 regardless of whether it's in use or not. What we'd be doing is upgrading to a smart, intelligent controller, which will monitor the water chemistry parameters that you're required to do by the Department of Health. And once these parameters are met, it will start to turn down the pump, basically reducing its speed from 100% down to, let's say, 50%, and continuously monitor the ORP and PH, which are the water chemistry parameters that you have to make sure that you maintain. And it will do so continuously. So during unoccupied hours or after hours when the pool is not in use, you'd be saving energy, and then the pumps will be brought back up to speed during regular operating hours. And this is expected to save about 60% of your pumping energy costs. The other feature, really nice feature about this system is that it's also web-based, so once we receive an Intranet drop, the logs that you currently do manually to report to the Department of Health on your pool conditions will now be automated and be pulled into a spreadsheet just through this system. We also went through and audited all your HVAC equipment throughout all your facilities. Obviously, HVAC equipment fail over time. We basically went through on a case-by-case basis to evaluate the useful life remaining on most of your units. And the units which were in worse condition were the units at the community center on that roof. Most of those use units are between 25 and 30 years old and have passed their useful life. We expect that on their next failure, you'll have to replace them on an emergency basis. So what we've done here is that we've incorporated them into this program so that you'd be able to replace them and fund it partially through the energy efficiency upgrades from the existing units. All these existing units are at what we'd consider to be a five, four to five EER based on our testing, and we'd be increasing these to about an 11.6 EER on average. What that relates to is about, they'll be consuming just about 50% of the energy that you're, that the new units will only consume about 50% of the energy as the older units that are currently there and are also very costly to maintain. These new units will come with a five-year warranty on the motors and compressors, and so it will also reduce your operational expenditure for the next few years, at least for the next five years. Also, the units that you have currently use R22 refrigerant. We'd be replacing these with R410, so you'd be moving to an environmentally friendly refrigerant. R22 is being phased out by the EPA as we speak, so that would be the correct path to go on. And then one thing that we really tried to do with this project was to, where applicable, incorporate solar PV. What we've looked at here is a number of different systems. We've looked at using solar carports, basically to provide two uses: one for covered parking for your citizens and staff at your facilities and visitors, and also to offset the energy usage in these buildings. What we can look, what I'm, want to show you here is if you look at the bottom picture, what we've looked at is Stion. It's a California corporation that makes thin film modules. They'd be, they're the vendor that we've selected for our module supply. These panels come with a 20-year warranty, 25-year on the performance guarantee. The inverters that we've selected all come with a standard 10-year warranty, and we've included the extended warranty for 20 years for these projects. I'll go through them one by one here, starting with the community center. Now, you can't see this very clearly, but what we have done here is that we've incorporated covered parking in the parking lot facing the senior center, as well as the parking lot to the side of the community center, as well as putting solar on the roof of this facility. This is expected to offset approximately 65% the energy consumption between the community center and the senior center. The system size for this one is 417 KW. We've also looked at incorporating carports at Barnes Park. This is the parking lot at Barnes Park, which is currently not covered. We'd be installing these solar carports to provide full covered parking for all the parking spaces there at Barnes Park. And this system has been sized to offset 100% of the energy consumption at Barnes Park. Similarly, at the City Yard, this is within the City Yard fence. We've put a carport against adjacent wall where a lot of staff park during the days while they're out in the field. And this also will offset 100% of the energy consumption at the City Yard. This is at the City Yard. Yes.
That's kind of in the back where the wall is.
Yes, this is basically right up against the wall. We'd have a single arm can to leave her back there, and that, this will produce enough energy to offset the use, all the energy consumed in the offices as well as the garages at the facility. And then finally, the last site that we have for our solar PV is right here at City Hall. What we would do, what we have proposed to do here is to use the MetroLink parking lot adjacent to the complex and basically provide covered parking in this parking lot. What we've done is we've kept it to the central area. The, at the ends of the parking lot, we've left those free for future development, which was discussed by staff, that there's some proposals or consideration for future development on either end of this parking lot. So what we have here is covered parking throughout the central parking spaces within this facility. And this system, 514 KV, would be enough to offset the energy, the majority of the energy consumption here at the City Hall facility and would be in addition to the system that's already existing on top of the parking garage. Another measure that we looked at, and this one's not an energy conservation measure, but it's more of a measure that is desired by the city, is adding air conditioning to the gymnasium at the community center.
That's where it needs one.
Correct. The gymnasium right now is not cooled.
It's super hot.
So this, this project would be to incorporate that, since we already have a proposal to replace all the other units on top of that, on top of the roof of the community center. We just add this unit at this time to provide cooling for the gymnasium. Now, what we have here is energy-efficient units, and we've included all the mechanical, electrical, and structural engineering design to incorporate these units, as well as we've incorporated energy efficiency features, such as man-controlled ventilation. One of the issues that you have with gymnasium is that, from an engineering standpoint, when we design these systems, we design them for worst-case scenario, which is when the gym is packed in the middle of June. That will not be the standard conditions year-round. So what we've done here is we'll, during those times, we'll be bringing in a maximum amount of outside air, but we'll also incorporate CO2 sensors in the duct to basically modulate the amount of outside air that we bring in at other times of the year when it's continued, conditions are more favorable, and we can either offset the amount of ventilated or mechanically ventilated air by bringing in more outside air or actually bringing in less outside air in times when the gym is less occupied while still maintaining temperature control within the, within the gymnasium.
Can I ask a question? I'm sorry. I'm over here. Is there a reason why it's being put on the, it says rooftop terminal units? Why are they being put back on the rooftop? I know that in a lot of buildings and a lot of even residences are opting to put them on the side of the house or the side of the buildings now, only because the rooftop ACs cause a lot of problems. Is there a reason why you're opting for that instead of putting it on the side?
Well, there's a couple of factors there. If we put it on at ground level, it would include additional costs because, because of the use of that facility, it's a gymnasium playing basketball, the air has to come from the top. So if we put them at ground level, we'll still have to duck up to the roof, and then you'll have a lot of exterior exposed ductwork to where it's exposed to corrosion and other issues. So it would be, from a long-term O&amp;M standpoint, placing the units on the roof and blowing the air directly into the facility is the most cost-effective way of, from a long-term O&amp;M standpoint.
Would that also mean that if, if the units are 25 years old or something that you said, especially at the gym, does that mean that the roof might have to be replaced as well before you can put those new units up there? I'm sure they weigh a lot.
We do the structural analysis, and we'll have to make roof penetration so that these units have feeds to come into the gym. We'll have to put structural reinforcements around them, but we'd make sure that the roof is suitable structurally. We wouldn't compromise the structural integrity of the roof. That would be part of the scope to basically have a structural engineer go through and provide sign and seal joints so that the roof can accept this new load as well.
But I, but the cost of what it might be in order to redo or restructure the roof so that it holds this unit instead of the one that's there now?
It's, it's actually a minimal cost based on the, you already have quite a bit of equipment on this roof. The roof has enough strength to hold these units. What we do is reinforce around where we'll be putting these, and it's minimal cost in the overall grand scheme of things in terms of the entire project to put this up there.
Okay, thanks.
Out of curiosity, let me, we'll go back to that. Listen, would, if you were to replace the ones that we have here, and I don't know how, maybe not that old, that probably would, I assume, probably save us more money than I assume, right?
The ones here at City Hall?
Yes.
The units here at City Hall still have quite a bit of useful life left in them. Now, mechanical equipment is usually something that you look at more of a capital expenditure than just a direct energy savings. The cost of the units really outweigh what you'll gain from an energy efficiency standpoint. So while you do save quite a bit, they cost a lot more to replace. And so you'd be looking at, let's say, a 15, as much as 35-year ROI on replacing many or most mechanical equipment. So you usually allow them to exhaust their useful life before you look at replacing. It's not really something you replace from this strict, strictly energy standpoint.
Ready? Thank you.
Overall, oh, this is not as clear, but these are the pricing for each of these items. We've broken it out, line item by line item. In those reports you have in front of you, it shows you the total costs, the annual utility savings. We also have the operational savings shown next to it, and these are numbers which we've reviewed with staff and we've, we're looking for, we've received feedback on as well. And then over in the second-to-last column, we have what's called avoided capital costs. These are the HVAC projects which I just mentioned. These aren't directly energy-saving projects, but you'll have to replace these units that are on the community center and hopefully at some point in time, add air conditioning to the gymnasium. What we've done here is that we've incorporated these into the project so that energy savings from other measures could help to pay for these in a cost-effective and budget-neutral Overall, this shows all the projects that we have looked at, and these projects were presented to staff, and we had several discussions regarding what would be the best combinations of projects to present to you today. And that's where we go for this project, which, in this project, the, what's not in here is the City Hall solar project as well as the gym HVAC unit. Not that these projects aren't being considered, but they're, from a financing standpoint, the most cost-effective option for the city would probably be to finance this through the California Energy Commission, CEC loan. And this is 1% money that's available to municipalities such as yourself to fund these sort of projects. There's a cap on this of $3 million. So what we've done here is we've chairpicked or selected with staff's input projects that would fit within a roughly a $3 million project budget, should we choose to use a CEC loan as the procurement mechanism for this. Any questions in regards to the numbers?
Do you, not towards the number, do you have this presentation that you could send on a PDF? Some of these spreadsheets are so tiny, like this, that it's really hard to read. Right here, it's so tiny.
On those, yes, I can send that, I can send those PDF.
Could you send it as a PDF to me, please?
Actually, I think you may have those, but I'll send it again.
Oh, thank you.
The slides that you're looking at here.
Okay, great.
In a nice larger version, maybe this will help you.
Yeah, that'll, thank you, that helps a lot.
You're welcome.
And this here is based on the CEC loan. We developed a performer to basically show that the project, the CEC loan from state is available at 1% for 20 years. So this is just one financing mechanism that is an option for you to utilize. It's obviously the most cost-effective from external financing as this money's only 1%. So what we've created here is a performer that shows what the energy savings would be versus what your cost to repay the debt service is. And what you see here is that the project is cash-positive, and it's cash-positive here from year one, and it will also, we have included an escalation rate here. So if you go through this year by year, you'll see that basically what you're doing here is diverting money that you typically would be included in your utility expenditure budget to pay for new equipment. And so it's not requiring an additional capital outlay in this project, but instead just a diversion from utility expenditure to new equipment. All right? Now, what I expect of this that I wanted to bring up to you is the performance guarantee. These numbers that you see here from an energy-saving standpoint came after we've done extensive work measuring and verifying the data in these buildings. We've basically logged in that Excel sheet that Commissioner Cruzbaca just mentioned, the line by line is basically all the light, if lighting fixtures throughout every building in this, in all your facilities. We've counted and quantified all the equipment. We've put out loggers to measure the actual runtime of the lights. We've measured water consumption. We've gone through all your utility bills and normalized them against national weather data. And so we, the numbers we project, we project with a high degree of confidence. And so with this project, we're offering a 95% performance guarantee, which basically states that if the city does not receive, do not achieve the savings that we project, that we would compensate the city for the difference. And that would be through an annual M&amp;V contract where we come in and measure and verify that the city actually achieves the savings that we have projected here. So it reduces your risk from, it basically reduces your risk on this project.
How, I'm sorry, how often would you come to measure to make sure that it's?
It would be an annual reconciliation. We'd have quarterly site visits. We'd basically, for example, solar system, we'd be, we'd have access remotely to monitor that, as well as the Energy Management Control System here at City Hall to monitor those systems. So we'd be able to monitor it continuously remotely. Then we'd schedule for quarterly or by annual site visits, and then on an annual basis, we'll come in, sit, present the numbers, saying, here's what we projected, here's what you actually achieved. All right? And we follow the IPMVP, which is the International Performance Measurement and Verification Protocol. This is used across the US. We use this with, we use this in what we consider the mush market municipalities, utilities, schools, and hospitals, and it's nationally recognized as the measurement and verification protocol for verifying these types of savings. And if, once we get to that point of selecting the projects that we'd like to go on, go through, I'd set up an M&amp;V workshop to go through these in more detail.
And as Craig mentioned, we've been helping public agencies obtain this California Energy Commission loan. And just so everyone's familiar with it, the Energy Commission has offered two municipalities financing at 1%. It's basically a loan. There's a $3 million maxes, as Craig had mentioned. So we would apply for this on a first-come, first-served basis. There was about $6 million slated to become available in November, December. I got a call last week from the Energy Commission. It is now available. And what they do is they have a revolving loan fund. So as loans come into the Energy Commission, closing out from other funds, they make it and recycle it to other cities and agencies on a first-come, first-served basis. What we'd be requesting is that if, sooner than later, if this is a project the city would like us to try and go after, these funds, again, once they would like us to try and go after, these funds, again, once they are, are taken, they come out of bundle and we just have to sit and wait for those funds to become available. Last week they became available. So we'd like to try and go after those funds. What is required to apply for the Energy Commission loan is one, the application, uh, two, a resolution by the board stating that the, this is a program, a project that the city council approves with that resolution and a feasibility study that we would do, uh, uh, and file that along with that. That's all we need to be in queue for those funds for the Energy Commission. Again, these are basically competitive funds at 1%. So if we can be in line with a resolution approving it, uh, we'd love to go after this. There's no cost to going after the funds. So it, it doesn't cost the city money to apply, um, but they would be gone if we don't get in line to, to get those funds. And they, they just became available about a week ago. Um, so we, we certainly love to see the city get its share, uh, of those funds. And, um, if there's any questions, I think that concludes it and that's our contact information there. And again, thank you for allowing us, uh, for the months of staff time with Dan Wall and, and the city staff, Maria, allowing us to go through these facilities, check your rooftops and, and having our team, we've had electrical engineers, facilities engineers really scour this city up and down. Uh, so again, thank you for allowing us the access and, and Dan, thank you for giving us so much of your time for these last few months. Uh, and I hope you appreciate, uh, the work and we'd love to continue to work with you.
All right, thank you very much. I like the extensive study. Councilman Ricardo Pacheco.
I'd like to thank, uh, Michael and Craig and staff, Dan Wall and, and our city manager. You guys did a great job. I know you took a lot of time putting this together. You, you expended a lot of your resources to come out here with your staff and you went through it. You spent time talking to a lot of our staff to make sure that all the needs were, were accommodated here. So I'm very excited about the study. I also want to thank Councilman, um, Susan Rubio who also spent a lot of time generating a lot of the ideas and her getting up to speed on, on all the energy issues and, and having a good grasp of, of, uh, you know, our issues that we have here. So I know that if we continue to go through with this, this will upgrade all of our energy systems that we have here and also create a, a cost savings. Then I think when you spoke at one of our recent meetings, you said that the cost savings would be almost immediately because of the, the low interest rate on the $3 million to do everything and the savings that we would generate through our, basically our Edison bill would then immediately start to pay back, uh, the loan itself, which would also mean that it's basically almost, uh, you know, no cost to us.
Absolutely, yes. So the, the avoided costs, the utility bill savings, the maintenance savings, uh, literally we'd be cash flow positive day one. So these savings would pay for this equipment literally for itself, um, beginning day one. So there's no payback. The city doesn't have to expend general fund monies to pay for this project and then hope in the future they get it back. This would literally pay for itself by applying for these low interest funds immediately.
But you know, as a result of doing all this, it's creates a better living space for our employees and most of all for our residents because a lot of them complain and they're, you know, about the complaints in the gym, how hot it gets in there. If we use this system, it would be, you know, very effective. Um, I would like, uh, I know it's a lot of information to absorb and I think our city council members probably want to spend some time reviewing this information and then getting, you know, getting back to you. I'm sure they can call you, have meetings with you just to get a better grasp of it. But what is your recommendation then? What are you, what are you requesting?
What we'd like to do is be able to, um, work with staff and, and the city council and hopefully be back on, on your next council agenda to approve a resolution to, uh, adopt a, it's a standard resolution from this, you know, California Energy Commission. It basically says that they'll be looking at this project and with that approved resolution, we'd be able to apply for those 1% funds. So it's an application, a feasibility state report that we'd conduct on our half. Uh, along with those, that would get us in line to apply for those funds. And again, it's up to 3 million and depending on which selective measures that between now and the time we have that next council meeting, if we can decide on the measures that we want to apply for, um, that's what we'd like to be in queue. So again, this is a no cost item to the city, but if we can get in line, these measures can become a reality here at the city. So that's what we'd be requesting.
Does the resolution bind us to any, anything?
Um, the resolutions, it's basically, it would not bind you to anything, even if you decided not to take the funds, um, they would just go right back into the pot for another city to take.
All right.
But I do know from experience, these funds have gone in and out. So again, I got a call from them last week, the funds are now available. They had about $6 million, become available about a week ago. Um, and again, first come, first served basis, uh, we'd like to be able to come in at least take our 3 million share for this project.
All right, sounds good. Councilmembers, have any further questions?
No, I just want to thank you very much. Have a safe trip back. Uh, thank you for waiting, um, but thank you so very much. I, I want to digest this. It's a lot, it's overwhelming, but thank you so very much. It was a very, very nice thorough presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and for coming over here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Okay, so then I guess you are, you are getting direction to, to bring it back as a resolution to the next group with staff to bring it back.
Well, I think it's probably going to be on a simultaneous track. For example, you know, some people will be digesting the information while, you know, reaching out to you to make sure they sit down with you and get the information firsthand and possibly make that decision on the count, next council meeting for the resolution, correct?
Michael and Craig, if you can make an effort to reach out to the council members that weren't on the committee so that they could understand it and ask the questions. I'm sure there's a lot of questions that they need to understand and the savings cost and, and kind of get them up to speed. Because I know this is the first time they're seeing this and they need to sit down and kind of go over it again.
Absolutely. We'd love to make ourselves available continuously as we have been and we'd, we'd love to continue that for the city and anyone who's interested, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll shoot you an email if I have any more questions. Thank you.
Wonderful.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. At this point, uh, we will go into closed session. So let's go ahead and do that. It shouldn't be long.
Is this long?
No, thank you.